And join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now, well, before we get started tonight, I've got a, I guess you could call the roll first if you would.
Mayor Knudsen?
Here.
District one, Morissette?
Here.
District two, Brokaw?
Here.
District three, Bernard?
Here.
District four, Wyland?
Here.
District five, O'Malley?
Here.
District six, Virchell?
Here.
All right, thank you. At this time, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present. And I know there are some high school students that are here. I think you're all in high school, correct? Okay. And they're here representing SAD. And I have a proclamation, and I understand you're expecting a photograph, so, right? Okay, hi. I'd like to proclaim Red Ribbon Week. Whereas the use and abuse of tobacco, alcohol, and other drugs is a great concern to society, and the Hudson School District and the local chapter of Students Against Destructive Decisions are SAD, provides educational programs for students urging them to support and live a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. And Community Action Incorporated Youth Action now provides needed services for families and teens in the area and supports programs for the prevention and rehabilitation of drug and alcohol abusers. And whereas National Red Ribbon Week was originally proclaimed in 1988 by the United States Congress, and wearing of the red ribbon to send the message, "Live Drug-Free." And whereas the Hudson School District, SAD, Youth Action, and the St. Cry Underage Drinking Coalition have joined in sponsoring the local Red Ribbon Campaign and the annual Red Ribbon 5K Walk Run Event to be held Saturday, October 17th. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim October 17th to the 23rd as official Red Ribbon Week in the city of Hudson, and urge all families and students to observe the campaign by supporting the Red Ribbon events, by wearing red ribbons, and by avoiding the use of tobacco, drugs, and alcohol. So thanks for coming. You want to come up and have a photo? Get yourselves on television and you can... Who's taking a photo? Why don't you all come around up here behind here by the flags? And, um... All right. And what are your names? You have to say it loud and you'll all hear it.
Hannah Montgomery.
Marissa Van Ness.
Ally Tiedemann.
Alyssa Pelocci.
Okay.
All right, could you get a little closer?
Over this way. Yes. Get sent out.
Okay. There you go, number one and two, keep smiling.
Okay, thanks for coming down, girls. And Marty, do you have your, no, okay, we had a police award to give, but not tonight, maybe next time. And were there other citizens here who would like to speak to the council, addressing the council on any issue that's not on tonight's agenda, but might come before a future council meeting or have an impact on the city of Hudson? This is your chance to come up and speak. Do you want to introduce yourself, Mr. Scout, or just sit there quietly? You can sit there quietly.
Put him on a spot.
I thought maybe you had like a 10-minute extemporaneous speech or something you wanted to give. Okay, all right. We'll move on to the consent agenda items.
To approve the public hearing, regular meeting minutes and closed session minutes of October 5th, 2009. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $336,085.6. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request and on the city's website. To approve the issuance of a secondhand article dealers license to Cindy Soradzki, 118 Bridgewater Trail, Hudson, Wisconsin, doing business as Harlins Haven at 1810 Crestview Drive, number 6B, Hudson, Wisconsin. To approve the request to move the no parking signs on Founder's Green to the mailbox side of the street, contingent on fire department approval. To approve extending the no parking yellow curb area by one car length on each side of the street near the crosswalk on 13th Street at Morrison Street. To place on file the quarterly reports of the fire tree and the building inspector and the unapproved Public Utility Commission minutes of October 13th, 2009. That is all.
What's your pleasure?
Move for approval.
Motion and a second to approve those items. Roll call vote?
Morissette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Virchell?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Brokaw?
Yes.
With that, those items are passed and we'll move back to our agenda. The Finance Committee, applications for operators licenses.
May I recuse myself?
Mr. Morissette has recused. The Finance Committee made two recommendations. The first part concerns the list of seven applicants. The committee is recommending approval for a regular operator's license from the period October 2009 to 6/30/11. Matthew Ellsworth, Andrew Jensen, Philip Kapi, Lana Kapke, Hannah Nozer, Alicia Olson, Amy Preston. Police Chief recommended approval and the Finance Committee recommended approval.
Move for approval.
The motion and a second to approve those licenses. Any discussion? Mr. Morissette's recused. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no. And those licenses are approved. The Finance Committee recommended that we deny the application for a regular operator's license submitted by Charis M. Steenberg, 359 Bear Drive, Hudson, Wisconsin, as recommended by Police Chief Jensen, on the basis that she had a number of recent alcohol-related offenses, including the most recent just over a month ago.
Move to deny the application based on the Coast Chief's recommendation.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no. Any comments, Kathy?
No.
And the license is denied. Next item is the Finance Officer's Monthly Report, which is in your packet from Betty. Would you like to hear from her? Good, because she's not here. We'll place it on file, and if you have questions, you can ask them at the next meeting. Next, we'll move to Public Safety Committee and take up item number two. Lori?
A request has been made to, to place signs on six different locations that you see on your issue sheet, where there would be no parking from November 15th through March 15th. Originally, Public Works came to Public Safety with a much longer list, which we were somewhat uncomfortable with. And the suggestion was made that maybe we could try this out on some of the most problematic streets first and see how it works for this winter. And so this is a list that Tom has come up with, I think maybe along with help from Marty, and we would ask for approval.
There's a motion and a second to approve the recommendation to make one-sided parking from November 15th to March 15th on this list of six streets.
I had one question of Public Works here. The, this is in lieu of going back to an odd-even parking scheme, where before we would say, you know, if it snows, park one side or the other side and we will plow. Now, what we're creating here, and what we've created in a lot of places, is a 24/7 for six months saying, "You can't park here." Except for the days that it snows and the days that it doesn't snow, you still can't park here. So I would like to know, what's the reasoning not going back to an odd-even parking scheme, where we get all the, all the streets plowed completely after a few days?
We discussed the odd-even parking issue again this year, and I guess the biggest problem with that was enforcement, and just the citizens had a hard time under, you know, it was a little confusion for the, you know, which side of the street, and it was hard to enforce. The areas that we chose were just areas that it's so congested, and as the winter progresses and, you know, the streets kind of narrow, that we can't hardly get our vehicles through there. Generally, we're plowing early mornings, and that's when all the residents are home. I understand that it's going to take away the parking for the entire day, but because of the odd-even parking with enforcement and the confusion, it was, we thought this would be a better option.
It just seems like we're, in all these situations, we're kind of using a hammer to solve a small problem, because it snows only a certain number of times a year, and you're taking away parking for a lot longer period of time.
Scott?
May I address that for just a second? Because under odd-even parking, that was in effect, whether it snowed or not also, that every day you had to change the side of the street on which you parked.
Versus emergency snow routes, yeah.
And so it's the same situation, that this is in effect the same number of weeks as the odd-even parking. The problem with odd-even parking is people just could not keep track of where they were supposed to put their cars. So it wound up as no system at all.
I suppose it ends up with the same amount, because you're either odd, all right, so where you're going. I was just thinking if there was a better solution than this overall.
Well, this is easier and simpler.
And like Lori said, that we had a longer list that we do have problem areas. This is, we narrowed it down to six of the hardest areas for us to maintain. Most of these, several of them are on hills, like going down from the fire hall down to Second Street. We go down in an ice storm and we just touch the brakes and the back end's going to come around. I mean, it's so narrow with vehicles on both sides of the road. The other place is at Norlake, going from Second to First, and then from Third down to Second. It's so narrow that we barely can get a truck through there, let alone when it gets a little icy, we touch the brakes. I mean, it's just going to cause an accident, there's going to be property damage if we don't do anything.
Right, so this really solves a couple of problems.
And the other, the other issue is on 10th Street where the sliding hill is. You know, when they get, you know, all the kids sliding up there, it's just so hard with vehicles on both sides. We can't hardly get through there. And then with kids running back and forth from one side to the other, that's really a safety issue there also.
Tom, what if, playing off what Lee said, what if we did not allow parking during the overnight and the early morning hours when most of the plowing is going on, but then during the day, you could park there again or something like that? Could that conceivably work?
Possibly.
You know, the one that I've got my eye on here is Vine Street, first to second, for example, which is down in the commercial part of town, parking can be tight. You're eliminating a little bit of parking, and you're doing it for six months out of the year, when really, as long as you could be confident that, boy, you know, from midnight to 6:00 AM, we can buzz through there and plow, or midnight to 8:00 AM, or whatever it would be. And maybe that's another approach. I'm just asking.
Yeah, and we still, during a snowstorm, we still have to, even during the day, we still have to, on a hill like that, because it's on a hill, we still have to, you know, salt it and plow it during the day also.
Okay.
That one.
All right, so others have desire to chime in here? Alan?
No.
Anyone else ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no. And so the committee recommendation passes. Chuck Schwartz is not with us tonight to give us an update on unfinished projects. He had an important meeting at the town of St. Joseph tonight. And so he's excused. I did tell him that if he'd get 11th Street done, he could have the night off. And if he didn't get 11th Street done, there was no point in showing up.
But it's done.
It is done.
That was just a joke. He was going to be off either way. Okay, so if you have any questions, there's an update sheet here. We can still discuss those. Tom is here to answer your questions.
Can Tom update 11th Street a little bit for us?
Yep.
If you would, please. All right. 11th Street was, the paving was completed on 11th Street this afternoon. We still have some restoration to do. Most of that is from the utility, from the XL Energy, the gas companies. Hopefully, that'll be taken care of shortly. We still have the centerline striping and some pavement markings. Weather permitting, that'll be taken care of by the end of the week also. Cooley Road update. Kerb and Gutter is going to, is scheduled to be started tomorrow. They're going to have a crew of people, a crew taking out concrete and another crew replacing it immediately. So we expect to be done, weather permitting, by the end of the week or first part of next week. If it gets toward the end of the week and they're still removing curb, we're going to, I recommended that we go with a high early concrete that's a little more per yard, added cost per yard, but instead of waiting seven days, we can get by with three days before we mill. Milling, they would like to do next week. It takes one day, they're planning on one day for milling, a day or so for patching, and one day for paving. If the weather just doesn't cooperate at all, we'll just have the kerb and gutter replaced this fall, and we can do the milling and paving next spring. I'm hoping that we can get this project completed this fall.
Good. Questions about Cooley or any of the others?
Just an update on the sidewalk. I know all the street maintenance projects are done also. The crack filling, seal coating, that was all completed this, this week. I think there was some crack filling up on Laurel, and I think that was one of the last spots. Sidewalk program, the soil stabilization at UroTech Foam is 90% completed. That's really going well. The safe step, the saw cutting, the trip hazards, company's going to be in the next two days to start that. So most of the projects are moving along very good now.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on projects?
Mr. Mayor, we'd like to compliment UroTech Foam and Steve Gibbs' crew, sensitive to the needs of the city in getting this done. They worked through the weekend to have the projects almost completed by today, taking advantage of the good weather on Sunday particularly.
Yes, and that's going to be nice, and it's nice to have some good weather. In our 11th Street project, we ended up in some weather delays, very unseasonably cold weather, and I think temperatures that, at one point, the state standards for when it's okay to pave were okay, but our city standards are a little tighter than that, and so we decided to hold off and wait for warmer weather. And now, as we start in Cooley, that'll be essentially our third big road project. It might seem like we've had unending construction going on all summer. It is true, we're spending a lot more money on road repair than we have, and so there's, this will be our third relatively major project. We're going to try to squeeze it in yet this year. We decided to do that last one after all the others were coming along, and we were confident that we had the money in the budget to do it. And I think it's going to be a good thing to get that done. And so we'll be hoping for continued warm weather over the next two weeks, and we'll be able to get that all wrapped up. I think with that, that moves us on to new business. We have, under new business, A, Resolution Number 18-09 in support of cable television peg remedial legislation, Wisconsin Legislative Reference Bureau, File 0945/7. Mr. O'Malley asked that this item be placed on the agenda, and you've got a copy of the resolution in your folder.
Mr. Mayor, would you prefer the motion to suspend the rules first, or a small discussion of the resolution?
I'll give you the floor, and you can handle it however you'd like.
Quite simply, this is just simply a resolution in support of pending legislation, the Wisconsin State Assembly and the Wisconsin State Senate, to fix some problems with Act 42, which was passed in 2007, and it was passed rather quickly. And frankly, it was a case where AT&amp;T got the better of our legislators in Madison. And we're going back now to fix those issues, primarily among them, some partial reinstatement of the peg fees, that is, public education and government fees, which support the, in case you're watching at home, support the cable channel you're watching right now. And without those fees, you would be looking at a blank screen. Some nights, that may be more interesting than what we're doing here, but we need those fees reinstated. And that's simply what this is all about. It also takes care of some consumer concerns and reinstates consumer protections that were taken away by the state franchise operation under Act 42. Under the remedial legislation, if you as a consumer call with a complaint, they have a shorter period of time to fix your complaint or address your complaint and not keep you hanging for days and days and days. So it's consumer protection and reinstatement of about approximately 50% of the peg fees that we used to get, that will at least keep this operation going. And that's it.
And if not, does this go dark? Do our channels go dark?
That is a distinct possibility, because if we don't have these fees, we have to pay our operators, we have to pay for the equipment, it all costs money, and if you don't have it, somebody else is going to have to cough up the funds, or you go dark. Saying that, I will move to suspend the rules so we can vote on this.
Second? There's a motion and a second to suspend the rules towards adoption of Resolution Number 18-09. Any discussion on suspending the rules? Okay, then I'll just say that I'm not certain there's any rush. So one of your options is whether to do it all tonight or have a first reading tonight. But that said, I mean, did you all get a chance to read the bill? It's 25 pages. That's what happens when we're asked to make resolutions about state legislation. And the first time this came up, and I, and I think Scott struggled with it too, because I asked, can I get a copy of what we're doing, and it wasn't that easy to find. Now this week, it came out. And so I've had a chance to read it. It's fairly complex. Some of it's kind of minutia. I mean, the resolution here talks about some highlights.
The summary, which was made possible by the Legislative Review Board, is about four pages long. And Jan Doona did email all the council members late, last week with that online, and basically says the same thing that the resolution here calls for. This resolution is simultaneously being passed by many communities in the state of Wisconsin. In fact, this one is closely adheres to the one recently passed by Sheboygan.
Yep. As background, as Scott mentioned, AT&amp;T, that AT&amp;T got the better of the legislature. Background for that, much of Wisconsin has a sole provider, which is AT&amp;T. In Hudson, we have a sole provider, which is Comcast. The idea of this bill, if I were to, you know, give you an explanation for why did the legislature pass this bill that was a change with, at the time, bipartisan support for what was called the Video Competition Bill. And the idea was so that we would ultimately have AT&amp;T come here and compete against Comcast. And so that instead of there being one cable provider, you choose from two. They compete, and you try to bring the prices down, or anyone else. And I just use that as a example. Comcast go to an AT&amp;T district or one of the other cable providers, go in, it was designed to try to make it easier for them to go in and do that. Now, that's not something you do overnight, and it has not happened in Wisconsin. But of course, we've been in a climate where, you know, companies making multi-billion-dollar investments into a new business opportunity and competition to someone who's already established. And it's not been a very favorable climate for those companies to perhaps go and do that. Does that mean that it would never happen? I don't think we know. And so this will be before the legislature, and what's being asked is that you would support passage of this bill and, in this resolution, I should mean, recommending support for it and that a copy of it be provided to our representatives in the State Assembly and the State Senate. So the motion is to suspend the rules towards adoption of 18-09. Any further discussion? Scott? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no?
No.
We need a roll call. Roll call vote.
Wyland?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Morissette?
Yes.
Brokaw?
Yes.
Bernard?
No.
Virchell?
Yes.
Motion passes five to one. You can now consider adoption of Resolution 18-09.
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Lori?
Well, I, it is somewhat complicated, and I guess I would like to take more time if we could, and I'm not sure what the rush is.
The time element for us, as a member of the Cable Advisory Board, is that we do want our legislators at the state level to understand that we're about to undergo the budgeting process for next year, and we need to know whether or not those peg fees are going to be there.
Aren't the peg fees there this, next year, 2010, still there? It's for the following year, I think.
Excuse me, that is correct. We are doing long-range planning right now. We're about to unveil, you know, moving to a different channel, changing the entire public aspect of local access here in Hudson, and that's long-range planning that we need answers for as soon as possible. But Alan is correct. For us, our franchise ends towards the end of next year. It depends on when your local franchise ends. And there are no local franchises anymore. There's one state franchise.
Okay.
So to put it in perspective, when our franchise ends, unless we get another funding source, we go offline.
Well, unless you get another funding source, yes.
Our peg fees have been, how much are they, Betty? You don't know? Is it about 40 or 50, 75,000?
75 cents a month.
75 cents.
It's approximately been about, approximately, 2% of your base cable cost. And under this bill, they've been totally taken away, and in another bill, it would reinstate 1%. So as I said, approximately half of what we used to get, but it's better than nothing.
So right now, every cable subscriber is paying 75 cents a month towards supporting this channel that people are watching right now?
Yes, that's right.
And under this bill, under the current law that's scheduled to sunset that, that'll go down, so their bill will go down by 75 cents, but we'll be faced with, to continue it, that'll become a budget item for us that we have to find funding for.
We'd have to take it out of general revenues, I guess, if we wish to do so.
Okay. Any other comments?
So every taxpayer would pay for it, whether they have cable or not?
Yes.
Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no? Resolution 18-09 is adopted. Next, we've got, Consider the Local Road Improvement Grant Program. You've got an issue sheet in your packet from Chuck Schwartz. It's for information and approval of the idea of applying for this grant. They've got two projects separated out. One is Hagan Street. One is the Second Street and Vine Street intersection, which needs work. I would recommend that we do apply for these grants. I'm also recommending that we fund these projects through our capital funding for next year.